Okay. Cover whatever you are ready, we are. Oh, you, no countdown?
Five, four, three, one.
Thank you. Good day to welcome tonight's school committee meeting. Mike, could you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Senate agenda, bills and payroll.
Make a motion to accept the Senate agenda is read.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, we put 7:10 for the budget subcommittee public hearing, and that was just to make sure we had time to start the meeting and if anything came up, so we wouldn't be late on starting it. So what I'd like to do, though, is let's take an opportunity to open it up to the public at this point, and if anybody would like to speak. And tonight's a brand-new process. Rather than having to go all the way over to the side, we've got a mic right in the center of the room here. And certainly anybody that would like to ask a question or make a comment, please come on up.
Basically, Paul's begging for someone to at least try. All right, maybe later.
What we can do, were you expecting anybody to come for the track?
I was not.
Okay, why don't we just talk about that, and then if someone comes in and we need to discuss further, we can catch up at that point, too. Why don't we just use the next few minutes and we'll talk about the track. So although Chuck's not here, do you have any more information on turnover date?
I do not.
I haven't heard anything.
Chuck.
Chuck was walking around with that information.
Nice try.
We'll hold that one until Chuck gets here, how's that?
Yeah, I guess it's a good position to be in, when there's not too many issues that we've got a lot of problems with, so. All right. Policy? I don't want to stick into the policy.
We could do.
You think we can get it done in time?
Yeah, I think so, I think we could.
Okay, want to do that?
Yeah, the policy tonight is just the second reading of those, of the purchasing policies.
All right, why don't you take the Senate, please?
So tonight, I just have two policies. Policy DJ, purchasing, and policy DK, payment procedures. There, policy DJ, we just had a couple of administrative changes to it where it said the superintendent shall serve as a purchasing agent. We updated that to be superintendent or designated to be the purchasing agent, so that Kelly doesn't have to personally approve, well, personally perform while purchasing. There. And then, as we discussed last, last week, we reviewed this policy and determined that the use of the credit card for doing purchases was within policy, so we didn't need to actually make any changes to that. So this policy we're presenting tonight is with just a couple of minor, you know, with a minor correction update in it relative to the purchasing agent. Otherwise, it's the same as it has been. And then purchasing, policy DK, payment procedures is current, there's no changes in that policy. So I basically would be presenting those. One is the slight revision, and this one is reviewed as current tonight. And last week, we had done the first reading of them here.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept policy DJ purchasing as presented and revised.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both.
And I'll make a motion to accept policy DK, payment procedures as reviewed as current.
Seconded. Motion made seconded, accept DK, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Indian unanimous. I'm just sort of watching, I want to take that quick, guys.
I didn't have any tools on me, John.
Anything you want to, do you want to talk about the, this fair?
Sure. Right now, at the high school, I believe that's why Mr. Decosse isn't here, we're having a world language fair at the high school right now. It's a project that all students, grades nine through 12, who take a foreign language at the high school are participating in. Basically, for most students, they'll get in a group of five or six, pick a country from anywhere in the world that's not the United States, and they're responsible for creating a menu of five or six food items from that country. And on, on the festival night, which is tonight, all of those students gather in the cafeteria, and it's basically a great place to go get dinner. You know, $20 buys you 20 tickets, you can go, that probably allows you to go to eight or nine different countries and sample whatever you'd like to. It's really a great event, it provides a lot of initiative for students, and it's a, it's a big help for the foreign language department to generate enthusiasm.
Thank you. Just a few more minutes, and then we'll get into the public hearing. Roland, how are you? Could you give us a couple, three minutes on pursuit of excellence? Please.
The task force has been meeting regularly. We've included Superintendent Clancy and the Chair of the School Committee. He's been up, they've been updated on our minutes and our proceedings. I think, to no one's surprise, the task is enormous, and it's taking time that we hadn't anticipated. But under, under the circumstances, we feel it is time well spent. The subcommittees are taking, have taken initiative, they're moving forward with developing the protocols to, to gather the data that we need to present to the school committee in terms of what the school should look like in 2020. That's where we are, we're moving ahead.
Anybody have any questions, Roland, tonight? Please, again, extend our thanks, I know you folks are putting a lot of work into it, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we about ready to kick off this budget hearing, folks?
Yes.
All right. Last two school committee meetings, we've had students in here in demonstrating and showing us, illustrating some of the various things that they've been learning in the schools, methodologies, subject-specific. And it's really been quite wonderful to see the students do this. And that's the manifestation of why there's a school district here and a town, is so that the students do learn and go on and leave very productive life. Tonight, it's a necessary task, and that's a tool that facilitates our being able to do that, and that's the budget. This evening, Mike Fontenella and Kelly Clancy, our superintendent, are going to take us through the proposed 2014 budget, and how we got there, where we're headed, and what we aim to achieve this upcoming year using this budget. I'd like to thank you all that came here tonight, Chris from FinCon, thank you, Keith, our town administrator, thanks, and folks from the community, thank you all for coming. Mike, it's all yours.
All right, thank you. I think last year, we can all remember, was a very difficult, difficult budget cycle, clearly was the most difficult since I've been on the school committee. And hearken back to probably was right the year before Paul and I were first elected, when there were significant staff reductions about eight years ago. And we managed to avoid that up till last year, but last year was a very difficult budget cycle. And there were three significant actions that we had to take last year to just get to a workable budget. The first was that the LEA, negotiation with the school committee, agreed to defer their steps and lanes last year during FY 2013. The second action was that we used more of our revolving funds than we have in the past in order to kind of meet the budget shortfall. And yet, even with those two actions combined, it didn't let us avoid, taking the third action was, we actually had to reduce district staffing levels by over eight full-time equivalent positions. Now, while that was a difficult budget to complete, we were able to avoid more drastic cuts, and by doing so, we were able to continue to provide the type of education for our children that we've come to expect in Littleton. Fortunately, this year, the budget process was more straightforward, more in line with what we've seen in the years past. And as we'll see during the presentation, we were able to maintain our current service and staffing levels while meeting all of our contractual obligations, which we did defer from last year to this. Now, as we went through the budgeting process, we definitely, as always, identified certain priorities that are specific to the current, or the upcoming budget year. The first, what we realized was that there is a mandatory implementation of an educator evaluation system. This will require some software, some training, some professional development for quite a bit of the staff in the district, so that's something that we had to incorporate into the budget. We're also looking at providing professional development specifically to support, continue supporting integration of technology and 21st century skills in the classrooms. We also are starting to deal with the alignment of curriculum with the Common Core, which is a standard coming our way from the federal government. And we're also continuing our inclusionary practices and co-teaching to meet the needs of all learners in the district across the spectrum. We also have priorities regarding technology initiatives, specifically integration of iPads in pre-K through 12 classrooms as we strive to, you know, embrace different opportunities that technology presents in these classrooms. And we also are undertaking the implementation of a new Aspen Student Information System, you know, designed to provide more feedback, both, you know, in the buildings, but also to parents as well. And of course, always a priority is to continue to improve our MCAS scores and continue to be the, what we expect out of this public school system in leading the way in education. So now, to do, meet all those priorities and also to continue to do what we do day in and day out, this is the proposed budget that we were going to put forth for FY 2014. And the summary that you see here shows two main points. The first is that we will increase our appropriated budget from 15.6 million to 16.4 million, an $800,000 increase. The second thing to notice is that similar to last year, we will use a portion of our revolving funds, 547,000, to meet some of our budget requirements for this fiscal year. The 547,000 that we're projecting to use is going to come right from the Circuit Breaker and be directed right back at special education expenses, which is exactly what Circuit Breaker is designed to do. Now, based on our current projections, we expect to end FY 2013 this current fiscal year and start 2014 with about $1.3 million combined in Circuit Breaker and School Choice. And although we are projecting to use 547,000 in FY 2014, based on our projected Circuit Breaker reimbursement rates for the next year and our School Choice inflows, we do expect to end FY 2014 with 1.5 million in those accounts. So, you know, based on the increased appropriation and the use of our revolving funds, our proposed budget for 2014 is a total of 16.9 million. In terms of dollars and percent increases, you can see here that salaries are really our only driver, as spending on expenses, on the, at least on the appropriated side, are being kept flat. Our expenses are rising on the sped side, as we've mentioned, but in terms of other expense levels, they are flat and will not affect the appropriated budget. The biggest, really the only driver is the $780,000 increase in salaries, which is about a 7.2% increase in the appropriated budget over last year. By keeping the expenses flat on the appropriated budget, the overall increase is about 5%. And again, the important thing to keep in mind, and we will talk about this as we go through the presentation, is that the increase in salaries, while fairly steep, is really a two-year jump. We have to keep that in mind, as last year, we deferred the steps, and we have to add those back in this year. And in doing that, you see more like a 7.2% increase rather than something more like three or 3.5 if we've gone year by year like we normally do. As we go through the budget, we'll see the cost centers. Now, historically, our cost centers had been arranged more along building lines, with also a cost center designed for central office and maintenance and things like that. Working with the town side on their, on the treasurer, we've realigned the cost centers to be more along the lines of, rather than being building-centric, more along the lines of service types, regular education, special education, student-staff or support, other instruction, system administration, school administration, transportation and buses and facilities and maintenance. So as we go through the different slides, we'll see those cost centers coming out. So we can see here, on a cost center by cost center basis, the total dollar and percent increases in the appropriated budget. In terms of dollars, the three biggest increases are in regular education, special education, and student-staff and support. For regular education and special education, the primary reason for the large dollar increases is, again, the effect of the teaching staff receiving two steps in one year. For line three, student-staff and support, we do see a 15.9% increase, which on a percentage basis is significantly higher than the other cost centers. This is primarily due to a new salary scale for school nurses that was implemented as part of our last contract with the LEA. This slide breaks down the regular education cost center by building for both salaries and expenses. And you can see that the salary increases fluctuate by building, with Shaker Lane and the high school showing larger percent increases compared to Russell Street and the middle school. And this is due to several factors, which include staff reductions we made last year, retirements in the buildings, and the replacement costs for those staff that were replaced. And as usual, year by year, we do reallocate staff between buildings, which causes, you know, the numbers, rather than being, you know, something like 7% building by building by building, you'll see it jump, you know, 12% double figures in, in one building and be, you know, somewhat lower in another building. The other thing to notice here is, is that there is a significant percent decrease in the high school expenses. Last year, those expenses were increased to meet the NEASC accreditation effort. That effort is now complete, so that line item has been reduced back to what we would normally expect it to see. So it's a little, a little different than what we would normally see there in terms of a percent decrease. This slide shows the special education budget, and as we look at this, we need to keep in mind that what we're showing here is the increase in spending based on our appropriated budget. And what we saw on the earlier slide was that the sped expenses did rise from FY 2013 to FY 2014. Here, it looks like it's flat, but what we're showing here is just the impact on the expenses for the appropriated budget. We do have an increase of about $547,000 in sped education expenses, which are our out-of-district placements and our, you know, other uses of the case collaborative. But we're funding that out of the Circuit Breaker revolving account rather than with our appropriated funds. Student-staff support, again, you can see that the, while it's not huge dollars compared to some of the other cost centers in terms of absolute dollars, the percentage increases are a little bit higher than some of the other cost centers, again, related to primarily moving, you know, we have, do have increases in salaries, there's no question about it. But we also do have the new salary scale for the nurses that we are implementing this year, so there's sort of a one-time hit on that, and then we'll go back to a more normal growth rate along the lines of the other cost centers. Other instruction here, while not a lot of dollars, again, this cost center does show a large percent increase primarily due to a reallocation of budget lines, as we went from using the old cost centers that, again, were building-centric and moved to the new cost centers. We also had some athletic coaches that left and were replaced by new coaches who actually had more experience in terms of number of years as teachers and coaches, so they were placed higher on the salary scale. So even though, again, it's not a lot of dollars, it was a fairly significant percent increase in this cost center. On this slide, and also on the maintenance slide, when you look at salaries, you'll see an increase of around 2% in salaries on both those slides. These are increases that we added to the budget that cover our non-union staff and our increases in salary, and it's the first salary increase for these staff in over four years. In total, those salary increases for this school administration cost center and the maintenance cost center for salaries is about $35,000. Transportation, we talked about this last week, this looks flat. In reality, we did get the new contract, we put it out to bid. It went out to bid after, well after, we had gotten into the budget cycle here, and we did not receive the bid until after the budget cycle was effectively completed. And what we saw in the bid that we accepted was a $55,000 increase from FY 2013. What we will do for this year, going in FY 2014, is we will work to close the gap, the $55,000 gap within the operating budget. If we cannot close it within the operating budget as we go to implement the FY 2014 budget in all, then we would go back towards the revolving funds to close up whatever's left over. Obviously, in 2015, this line will be increased to meet the realities of the new contract that we just signed, which is a five-year contract?
Yes.
Five-year contract. Again, as you can see here, facilities and maintenance expenses are flat as the admin team continues to strive to find efficiencies and opportunities for cost avoidance, and we do have a small dollar increase in salaries, about 2%. This is a, because salaries are the number-one driver of the budget increase this year, this slide shows where those increases are occurring. For the teachers, $552,000, again, is made up of $197,000 that would have been the FY 2013 increase if we had not deferred the steps and lanes. $174,000 is the steps and lanes for FY 2014. And another $180,000 is added to the base, which was part of the negotiation we had with the LEA when we went through the last contract negotiation with them, and is part of the way we implemented that step deferment. So that will be added to the base. Those three items together add up to the biggest driver of $550,000. The other contractual union employee groups beyond teachers account for another $108,000, and $125,000 covers all of our support, maintenance, and other non-contract employees, again, including that implementation of the nursing scale. So budget factors that we are still dealing with in 2014, and something that we'll keep in mind are, we do have contractual steps that we're dealing with, we have our increased transportation costs. We definitely need to look at an increase in professional development funding as we go through various, some things that we choose to do, some things that are, we are being asked to do, asked in the general sense of do it anyway. We also are looking to restore Russell Street after-school activities, which is something we did remove last year as part of the budget effort. We do, again, have that educator evaluation software and training costs that we have to absorb and implement. And we also are starting to wrestle with an increase in district annual software costs as software licenses that we have been paying in the past come up for renewal. We are seeing increases in those costs that we need to be able to deal with. In terms of cost controls, again, we are level staff for FY 2014, we have not added any staff. We continue to manage and control our energy costs by increasing energy education, working with other districts and collaboratives on joint purchasing initiatives. We continue to work reducing paper use and trying to rely more on electronic newsletters and other methods of dispersing information. We are able, through this budgeting process, to maintain our funds in reserve for unexpected out-of-district costs. As I said, we expect to start FY 2014 with about 1.3 million in School Choice and Circuit Breaker revolving funds. And based on our usage and our reimbursements, we expect to end FY 2014 and start FY 2015 with about 1.5 million in those two accounts. And as always, the goal is to continue to provide optimal programming in our district, not-of-district student placements. And as a result of this commitment, you know, we believe we've exercised a cost avoidance of over $750,000. You know, our sped costs are going up, but with the efforts that the administration is making, we feel like they've gone up less than they otherwise could have, and to a fairly significant amount. Other concerns that we have as we continue to, you know, move towards the end of 2013 and the implementation of this, the next budget, and anticipating our new budget in 2015, increased costs of out-of-district placements, including the case collaborative program, increased transportation costs, both in regular ed and sped. Again, our increased and ongoing reliance on revolving funds to fund our operating budget. Obviously, energy costs are always an uncertainty, and, you know, we worry about further cuts or continued level funding of local aid. Chapter 70, right now, we went through this budgeting exercise, while we are grateful for the increase in appropriation, or the projected increase in appropriation of around $800,000, the, the chapter 70 part of what the town is receiving is projected to be level-funded again. So that's something that we keep in mind, because so much of our budget is, we rely on the state to fund for us. And that is the numbers of the budget, and I'm now going to let Superintendent Clancy give us an idea of how that budget will affect our educational mission.
Thank you, Mike. During the budget process, we start by developing budgets based on our students' needs. In order to do this, we need to start at the very beginning, and the very beginning of who we are is our mission statement. We revised our mission statement a little over a year ago, and our mission is to foster a community of learners who strive for excellence and prepare each student to be a successful, contributing citizen within a global society. contributing citizen within a global society. We also have a strategic plan that we include in each school committee package. From the strategic plan, we have school improvement plans. Many parents have taken part in those committees, and from there, we set goals and reflect on those goals and our successes from year to year. All those factors are included as we build our budget from year to year. As a district, we have four core values: respect, responsibility, integrity, and accountability. Accomplishments, we'll start with our K-5 schools, Shaker Lane and Russell Street. Under curriculum instruction and assessment, our staff have been aligning the ELA curriculum with our common core standards. We've had new standards that have come out and have caused us to reflect on our curriculum and realign our curriculum to those standards. I've made a statement a number of times at school committee meetings. The caveat is if our current standards are higher than the national core standards, we keep our current standards. We've also spent time revising our math assessments to also align with the common core standards. Because the standards have changed somewhat, we are currently in the process of taking a look at our report cards and realigning them with the various standards so that we have alignment that ties directly into our curriculum. We continue to implement response to intervention. Just last week, we had a visiting school district at Russell Street School to come and take a look at our program. They've heard a lot of good things about it. We've had great success with our implementation and have helped a lot of students come back up to grade level with the various interventions that we do offer. Technology, we've extended or expanded our implementation of iPads as an instructional tool for our grades pre-K to 5. We see a lot more happening with our classrooms. They certainly aren't a replacement of what we do, they're an enhancement of what we do in our classrooms. There's a lot of research out there now on how technology does enhance learning if used properly and along with other strategies within the classroom, you can increase a student's learning rate quite significantly. Again, it's all about using all the tools in one's toolbox as we increase our instructional pedagogy or repertoire. We've, rather than purchasing LCD projectors, we found they're more expensive and they're not as reliable, we started purchasing widescreen TVs and a wireless hookup called Apple TVs that ties directly into our laptops and our iPads. We're also using them when we design student IEPs so that the people involved in the IEP process can be actively engaged in the creation of the IEP during the meeting rather than waiting two or three days to see the final product, so to speak. We've been purchasing document cameras at Shaker Lane with funding from our budget and also the PTA. Document cameras are not dissimilar to the old overhead projectors, they just do a lot more and tie into the curriculum and create great efficiencies within our classrooms. Utilization of technology. To share student work with parents, community, we have monthly newsletters, actually weekly newsletters to parents that are electronically sent. Many of our principals are blogging, and Dr. Brankel was down in Washington with middle school class last week, and we were entertained with continuous blogs about what was happening during the trip. It was a real treat to be able to follow the trip without being there, although I would've rather been there, but it was a nice treat to be able to follow it. We're also using Littleton Community Television to enhance what we're doing in our schools and also share in our celebrations with the broader community. Professional development that we provided for staff in our elementary schools, obviously common core state standards, collaborative literacy activities at Russell Street School, math differentiation, Google Drive for educators, technology integration, culture and climate. A survey has been administered in our K-5 parent body to take a look at how well we're perceived in our community by our school parents in terms of establishing an optimal culture for learning. Middle school accomplishments. Second year of implementation of our new mathematics model with our Glencoe-Lagrave resource, going quite well. There's an online component to that resource that's definitely helped multipaced instruction. Second year of implementation of our new world language program. We're already seeing a bit of a change in our high school programming. We have more students that are opting to take two languages for four years in high school, and we attribute that to the change in format that we're using with our middle school world language program. Second year in our middle school for the academic support center. We were listed by the DESC this year as a commendation school. It's certainly more than our academic support center that contributes to that, but all these factors combined together have made a significant difference, and as a result, we've received state recognition as a result of the new initiatives that we've implemented. Implementation of a flexible library model and implementation of Bring Your Own Device program this year, first year in the middle school, had great success with this program. We're finding, though, that bandwidth plays a significant role when we increase our computers to a, I'm not going to say an exponential rate, but two to three times the number of computers that we've had in the school before, and we're fortunate to be able to address that issue prior to the end of the year. So as we move forward with BYOD, we're going to have more and more computers come through the middle school. We will be extending that program to the high school next year. We've had PD opportunities for our staff in curriculum mapping, common core technology, second step program, the role of the BCBA, ABA therapist and autism awareness, and we currently have a homework committee that's alive and active, and we're looking forward to the recommendations that come out of that committee. Our high school. Our high school has been spending the last year and a half working on a NEASC preliminary report. We have a visit of a NEASC team in May of this year, and they re-accredit schools, high schools across the nation, every 10 years, and we're up for re-accreditation this year. We've been preparing reports and curriculum, instruction and assessment. Professional development efforts, as I've just mentioned, have been heavily dedicated to the NEASC self-study. Our staff have also been involved in common core training and curriculum mapping. We were able to expand our virtual high school program with AP music theory this year. We were also able to add another 25 seats that were shared between the middle school and high school. In our middle school, this really offers our students an opportunity, who are showing talent in various areas, to expand from the classroom instruction and be able to take classes that challenge their academic abilities and keep them moving along the continuum of learning, so to speak. Our spring 2012 MCAS results, very pleased with our results for the past few years, more than the past few years. We've been doing well, we've been doing better every year. Our ELA students, 98% of our students scored proficient or advanced. 95% of our math students scored proficient and advanced. Science, 94% of our students scored proficient and advanced. SAT results in 2012, we had 11-point increase in critical reading, a 23-point increase in math, three-point increase in writing. Seven students received commendations from the National Merit Scholarship Program based on the PSAT performance. College Board recognition, we've made the AP honor roll for the second year in a row. Littleton High School was recognized for simultaneously increasing student access to AP courses and student performance on AP exams. We've significantly increased the number of students that were receiving a score of three or better, so we're very pleased with those results. Our results for May 2012, 89 students took 170 AP exams. 91% of the AP students scored three or better. A total of 27 AP scholars, one national AP scholar, 11 AP scholars with distinction, and five AP scholars with honor. Now, all this wouldn't be possible unless we were working together as a community. The last slide that I have before you this evening takes a look at a myriad of organizations and groups that help us in our schools every day. We have over 450 volunteers that come into our schools every year. They play a key role in helping us move our students forward, helping us move learning Senior citizens, parents, PTA, Littleton Light and Water, our police department, fire department, scholarship fund, our education foundation, they all help us get our job done. And most importantly, we'd like to thank the residents of Littleton for supporting education in our community. Also like to formally extend kudos to our leadership group that's looking at pursuit of excellence, and their main mission or task at hand is to help us shape our schools so we have a vision in terms of what our school should look like within the next 10 to 20 years. A lot of hard work going on there. We've shared a lot of articles, a lot of great educational dialogue, and we're certainly looking forward to some recommendations that will be coming out of the committee. Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. What I'd like to do is open up to any questions. If you would like to make a comment or ask a question, please come on up to the mic, just say name, address, please, and then fire away with the question and your comment. Welcome all of you. Let's see if we can answer it. Let's be first. Does that mean there are no questions, no comments, or just shy to be the first one? I'm going to take it that there are no comments, no questions. We've got members of FinCom and Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator. Do you all want to offer any comment? Town Administrator Keith Burman, please.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman and members, and I just want to express our appreciation for the cooperation that we have had between the general government and the schools, well, every year, I would say, but it seemed to me like this year was a particularly cordial set of budget negotiations where the number that you've arrived at is the number that the Board of Selectmen had voted to support earlier in the process, so I'm glad that we're at that point of agreement on how to divide up the budget pie as we go into town meeting. And I appreciate all of the openness and communication that we've had between the town and the school administrations and between our two committees and the finance committee as well, and hope that through these efforts, we can be better supporting the excellence that we all want to see in the school system. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you. And Keith offers an opportunity for a segue on that. This is a process that many folks were involved. It wasn't just the school committee, the administrators, as Keith mentioned, sort of the Board of Selectmen, the FinCom, very instrumental as we went through this. And also, it's not a process that just began last week. It began almost immediately after we finished that town meeting last time and thinking how we were going to come to the future, so we'd be here today and be able to offer something. And certainly, our thanks goes out, as Kelly's already mentioned, to the residents of Littleton. You're all the ones resourcing it. You're the ones that enabled it to happen, and we just get to have the opportunity to spend your money. But it's on all of our children here in town, and hopefully, not hopefully, I'm convinced we are making a difference. When I say "we," it's the collective we, of all 9,000 of us here in Littleton. So, thank you to all of you on that. Okay, so now Keith's broken the ice, and we made a couple more comments. Would anybody, Kim?
James Kennedy, I live at 50 Gilson Road and have two sons in the school department. And I just have a question about the Russell Street School after-school activities. My son, Isaac, loves math, and this year, we were very disappointed that he couldn't take, you know, a math club after school. So I was wondering if all after-school activities were going to get restored, or if there were specific ones, or what was the consensus there? Or if it hasn't been decided, that would be good to know also.
We're really leaving that decision up to the school principal. We're putting the amount of money that we had two years ago back into the budget, so there is money to do a variety of things that will depend on the teacher's talents and also the priorities of the school status.
Okay, and...
A good idea would be to reach out directly to Mr. Buzidlo and let him know that you have at least one kid who's interested in math. Sure, you won't be the only one who's...
Sure, there's a lot more interested in math. I hope so.
That would be part of the process is the input from parents and students about what they would like would certainly be a significant part of the decision-making process, so get right to the source right there.
Well done. Thank you, thank you.
Selectmen Ted Dusset.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm sorry, missed your presentation. I would like to look at the numbers a little bit more closely because, you know, I'm really happy. Last year, you know, it was a really tough budget year, and we talked about kicking the can down the road, and I was saying that the can's going to only be bigger, and that, you know, I was, I don't think I was preaching doom and gloom, but I was worried about it. So I'd just like to congratulate the school committee and all those involved in coming together and getting a good budget together and, you know, making everything work and getting rid of all my anxiety. Now, if I look at it more closely, maybe, make Ted happy, yeah, I'm sure that's a top everyone's list. So, you know, maybe I look at the numbers a little more closely and more, I don't think I'll get any more worried, but I'm just very happy and want to congratulate everybody involved on coming together and making a budget after what, you know, we anticipated from last year, so good job.
Thanks, Ted. And I'd be remiss not to emphasize the help that Littleton Education Association, the teachers and other staff helped to tie us over between the fiscal years. It was a really big help, as you saw with Mike throwing some of the numbers up there, to defer that step last year through to this year, and we were able to make it. As Ted mentioned, as we did look at, you know, down the road when we were sitting here a year or so ago, and we looked at what that revolving fund would look like, and while certainly there were concerns, there was a degree of confidence, at least, that it was going to be supportive to be able to make some decisions we did make last year and then to ride into fiscal year 14, as you saw this evening. Okay, I want anything?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to just make sort of a question to the superintendent here. You know, last year, we had to reduce staff, and there was a lot of concern from the community about the impact of the education program here, and this year, we didn't, you didn't come back and propose substantial restoration of staff. Could you comment on the effectiveness of our education program in light of those reductions at this point?
Well, to the credit of our organization, our teachers and everybody involved in education in the community, we were able to fill those voids, and as a result, we felt comfortable about the programming that we had for our students. I mean, of course, if we felt that the money was available, one of my presentations, we gave you a list of things that we would reinstate, and it wasn't necessarily some of the things that we downsized. There were other areas that we took a look at. We really dissected our school district, and we did it in two ways. Last year, we looked at what we had in terms of structure and looked at ways we could organize or reorganize more correctly and ensure that we still met our students' needs. This year, we took a different approach. We took a dollar value for each school, and we asked our principals to build their schools from nothing and see if there was anything that we were doing that we perhaps should not be doing, and also gave us an opportunity to reflect on things that perhaps we should be doing that we're not. And in the end, we're very pleased with our results. We're on target with our vision and our strategic plan, and it was a great exercise to undergo. So, you know, I'm not going to say that our teachers have not picked up more roles, but they've made it work. They're dedicated, they're here to make sure they do everything humanly possible to meet the needs of all students.
the needs of all students.
Really coming over, I think, is to echo what everybody else is saying, is by thanking everybody for their involvement and for sticking to it. Last year, when Tyler left us, Tyler was a big part in last year's budget, so I just wanna thank my colleagues who stepped up, Mike, and each of you who have stepped up and kind of picked up the load. So I just wanna take my hat off to you guys.
Ethan?
I just have one question for the superintendent. Through the presentations, right, in the past couple weeks, we've talked about technology and the use of technology in the classroom. One thing that was brought to my concern, brought to my attention in the past week as a concern, and I don't know if it's been looked at, is the technology at the high school, thinking about our two tech labs that are deteriorating, and it's becoming exceedingly difficult for teachers to be able to take students down there and work on a project or, you know, something like Google Docs or something like that where we can work collaboratively, you know, maybe it's a research paper or something of that nature. And I was wondering, you know, maybe not in this budget cycle, but are we identifying that as an area of concern, you know, looking ahead to future budget years as something we could try to mitigate the results of?
Excellent question. Two years ago, I identified a number of areas when we took a look at our system, and I had an opportunity to do an analysis of where we were. And at that time, I did a technology presentation, and there were a number of things that I brought out. One of them was our high school, the state of our infrastructure, the state of our semi-wireless, so to speak. It's not totally wireless at this point in time, and the age of our computers. But within two years, we've had an opportunity to bring in some new equipment, significant equipment. We are slotted pending approval of the capital plan at town meeting to put in a new network structure, wireless structure within the high school, which will help out immensely. We intend on moving our BYOD program into our high school next year, and we also have some money allocated in capital, providing it passes a town meeting, to start looking at those needs, not only at the high school, but at Shaker Lane as well. There were two schools that really were targeted when I did my analysis, and it was Shaker Lane and the high school. Shaker Lane, due to the age of the renovation, had very spotty access to technology. We've managed to do some incredible things considering our limitations with local wireless networks, et cetera. But you have to remember, folks, that five years ago, we were still looking at computer labs, and we were looking at what I call, I don't even think we had four-to-one systems, four classrooms to one point or focal point. Nowadays, when we bring in broadband wireless systems, we're looking at one-to-one so that we can run video in our classrooms. So the technology has changed drastically in that five-year period, and we're no longer dependent on two computer labs and computers for our teachers. We have computers for our students. Now, with the BYOD program, we're tripling or quadrupling the number of devices that are coming into our schools, so we're catching up to the times, so to speak. I hope that helps, Ethan.
Jim?
Sorry to be a little bit of a hog, but I had an off thought based on his question. And I brought a picture. If the selectmen were to give you a blank check, and if you could let us know in order of priority, you know, what would you spend money on first? Language programs, technology, you know, what are the needs, what are the most important pressing needs for the school district?
Personally, program. How's that, Jim?
Sure.
I guess we just...
I'll let the superintendent make the decision.
A very, very loaded question. Really, I don't believe in blank checks because they don't happen. Realistically, though, first and foremost would be to continue to meet our students' needs, and that would be the whole myriad of everything we do in education, whether it be, again, we look at class sizes every year, looking at expansion of course offerings, expansion of partnerships. I mean, there's not just one thing we would do. We would be looking at all aspects of education. When we look at the evolution of education, just within the last ten years, you'll notice that we've had a lot of changes in curriculum, technology, teaching pedagogy, but we're still moving forward with terminology like differentiated instruction, flipped classrooms, multi-paced learning. And we really need to continue to expend resources, continue to train our staff. I think professional development would be very high on my priorities. If you wanna be the best, your staff has to be the best, and you have to provide that training for your staff, and it needs to be ongoing. The one area that I've identified in the system, and we're doing a lot of great things, but like most systems that have had trouble securing funding all over the world, not just the nation, we've had to be very strategic as we've implemented programs and moved forward with very limited funding. But our students who are passionate, are gifted in certain areas, and I use the gifted word very sparingly because I believe all of our students are gifted, but students that perhaps aren't as challenged as they could be in some of our classes, providing those extra resources to them, and I'm not referring to pull-out classes, I'm referring to enrichment, opportunities for project-based learning. All of those kinds of activities are part of our master plan, but they need to be methodical. We don't have a blank check, so we have to remember every penny we spend in one area, we have to weigh it against all the other areas that we're trying to move forward in.
So expand, but not on the blank check piece, but as to what we will do. We have, and there are people in the audience this evening, who are working on the Pursuit of Excellence Task Force, and that is, what do we want our schools to look like in the future? What do we want to have happen? In a moment here, I'm just gonna ask you all a very general question and really ask you for answers to it. This is a group of citizens in the town, along with some other folks from the school committee and the administration, who are looking at where we stand today, what's out there, not just in the realm of technology, but in the whole field of education and to learn from it and apply as best as possible. Just on and off, we had Representative Jen Benson from the next district, House District of the state of Massachusetts, who she and about twenty other folks took a trip to Finland and Sweden to study a little bit of their systems. And right here in this room, oh, about six weeks or so ago, am I right, Alex, about six weeks ago?
Yeah.
Give or take. She gave us a presentation on her experiences there. So, again, we're not gonna run schools like Finland. We're not Finland. We're gonna do things differently, for sure, but certainly to try and pick up some things, and that's just one very off example, if you will, of things we're looking to. And the question, and this may come because I think you're getting up to want to ask a question or say something, Alex. So let me ask the question and see if it fits in with you, and that is, we're in the business of educating your children. It's not for aggrandizement here or anything, it's surely not the pay for us up here. What do you want us doing? So you just saw our budget, you saw some of the priorities we put up there. So we think we're trying to do what the administration's actually doing for your children. What do you want us to do that we're not doing? I'm gonna ask you not to ask the blank check question, but you understand the realities of our town, our culture, if you will, our socioeconomic basis here, you know our town government, how it works. What would you like to see us do differently, or more of, or less of, for your children? Anybody wanna jump in on that? Do you wanna jump in on that one, Alex?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Alex Pratt, Bridge Road, Pursuit of Excellence Task Force, but I'm not wearing that hat right now. One question about this year's budget, and then I'll sort of address that question going on. Last year, FY13, we made a lot of big cuts, particularly in Russell Street School where we saw one, I believe it was one FTE teacher for grades three, four, and five eliminated. And I know this committee and the administrative team went through a lot of work to try to minimize that impact, but there was still an impact. So my question is, is that a goal that we have? Do we want to restore those cuts? Do we want to reduce those class sizes, especially in the elementary schools when it matters most? And kind of as a follow-up to that, when? When do we aim to do that? When are we hoping to do that? It's not always, you know, this committee's ability to say, "We're gonna do it right now," but realistically, when is the plan? What's the plan going forward regarding those cuts?
That's a good question, Alex. When we were going through our visioning exercise this year and, you know, looking at possible additions to the budget beyond a level services budget, we considered all those aspects of downsizing that we did last year. And the downsizing of a classroom teacher per grade fit in with our population of students at that time, and we feel that our class sizes are amiable to that age group, and indications this year certainly support that statement. There's been mirages of research done on class size, and when you really tease out the salient points of the research, the most important factor, the predominant factor in the classroom is the teacher and the skill set that the teacher has. And so the re-establishment or reinstatement of those teachers was not high on our priority list at this point in time. If our population increased, obviously, that priority would be higher up on the list. There are other things that, you know, we're looking at as we vision forward. We were fortunate enough to offer a Mandarin class in high school this year. Many, many high schools across the nation have realized that Mandarin is actually the most common language in the world and have been offering Mandarin for a number of years. So we jumped into, or we dipped our toe in the water, so to speak, in that area. There may be other areas that we're looking at. Character education, for example, at Russell Street School, where we're, you know, looking very seriously into incorporating what we call the responsive classroom. Shaker Lane has done some research in that area as well. So there are other areas that we're looking at, and I guess a caution, I would add, Alex, just like other organizations change, schools need to be adaptive in nature also. The skill sets that our students needed twenty years ago aren't the skill sets that they need today. There are some similar skill sets, but they're certainly not identical. And we need to be ahead of the wave rather than catching up to the wave. So I can't say that the downsizing plan, if I look at all aspects of it, we would welcome the reinstatement of everything that we've downsized.
To kind of expand on that, I think, I was making some notes, is if there's any silver lining in what we've gone through, more last year than this year, but still this year, and it happens every budget cycle, but last year, because we were actually looking at making cuts, if there's any silver lining in that, it helps us understand how robust and vigorous the budgeting effort is by the admin team. Every year, they go through an evaluation of priorities and opportunities relative to the finite resources we have. And we may differ, any one of us might have a different opinion about, "Well, I would do that first rather than that." There's no question about that we'd all have, there would be significant differences in how we approach it, but don't, we can't ever, you know, take for granted the amount of effort that they put forth in making their determination. So when you ask, "How quickly would we put those teachers back?" "As soon as possible, given the constraints we're dealing with and what that opportunity to do that would mean relative to other opportunities within the district." So who knows when we would do it, because it would depend on a lot of factors, not just more money. It would depend on, well, the opportunity, and maybe we would decide, well, you know, there's actually a better opportunity that just presented itself, so the opportunity to restore those budget, those staffing levels might get deferred for a good reason, or what somebody would perceive as a good reason, maybe not everybody would perceive it as a good reason. But again, my point is, is that the robust and vigorous effort that they go through to make those determinations can't be taken for granted. Even if some of us disagree with a particular implementation, don't ever fault the effort that was put forth to make that determination.
This summer, we have our, as it's called, summer school, our little session. We meet for a couple days for about six, seven hours each day. Staffing is gonna be high on the agenda for discussion, and not just in the context of what we've been seeing year over year here, but as we see a significant increase in housing in the town, roughly a hundred and ninety units, and how that's gonna break out the number of bedrooms in each of those units, whether it's one, two, or three bedrooms in that ratio, because that's gonna drive a lot of things as to the projected number of children that may arrive with those units also. And we wanna certainly be on the ball wave with that particular one. Construction slated, most likely to start later this spring, summer, at least for the earthmoving as permits make their way. Bottom line is, it's been through the planning board, it's been through the ZBA more specifically, more importantly, for the 40B piece of this. Those are things we gotta pay real close attention to. It's not gonna impact this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, we'll certainly start to feel it, and by sixteen, I think maybe we'll have a full impact. And the range of that's been from fifty, and Chuck did a lot of research on this two years ago when the whole process started, but we're looking at as low as fifteen, and showing it could easily be over a hundred children. So, to a staffing question, that's certainly on our list of things.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I just heard a lot of good things. To Mike's point first, I think, I didn't mean to imply that I am faulting the effort that the admin team put in. I agree that...
I was gonna make that comment anyway. I already made it before we...
Yeah, okay.
It just segued right into it.
Yeah. There's a lot of points that are bouncing very well off one another. To the classroom size point, you have a much more extensive understanding of the research than I do, but I have been reviewing class size research, and there are, you know, there are strong arguments on each side, but especially at the lower-level grades in the elementary schools, what matters most in anything we can do is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. But another very important factor, I won't say the next important, but a very important factor, is how much individual time that teacher can spend with each student, and that's where class size comes into effect. And surely, it's important at the middle school and at the high school levels, and as we see an increase in the number of middle school students next year with the fifth-grade class being very large, that'll be a problem that we need to be aware of and work with. But even at the elementary school level, I think right now, there's a big need to at least have a very, very open conversation about, do we need more teachers in our classrooms? Do we need, you know, smaller class sizes, at least at the elementary school? Just one point there. Going to, what do we want the school district to be? What would we like you to do as a town? And going even back to the Mandarin, another bit of research that is much more clear, I think, than class sizes, is about learning foreign languages and learning fluency. And students and everyone learns language best when they are very young. And so my question is, if we're trying to get out ahead, why we offer the bulk of our foreign language program at the high school and some at the middle school level, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, principals, but very little at the elementary school? I know a couple years ago, we had some Spanish education very, not every day, not very strong, but something in the elementary schools for students to go through. I believe that was cut a number of years ago or just wasn't renewed. But if we had students learning Spanish in, let's say, first grade, second grade, we would have, as Jen Benson was telling us in Finland, we would have students who are fluent in two languages by the time they reach third, fourth grade. That would be incredible, and because it would be a lot easier to teach these students and to teach them fluency, which I don't think we reached at the high school, I don't think students who graduate from the Spanish program are very often fluent in Spanish. I think if we were to teach them earlier and to teach them, if we were to make that investment in their early education, or rather, in their elementary school education, foreign language, that would stick with them, because once you know a language, you know, you can keep going with it. But if you're getting older and you have other priorities, if you're, you know, it's a lot harder to learn a language at my age and at your age, despite...
Who you talking to?
Anyone up there. It would've been easier for you to learn a language at my age, and it's easier for me to learn a language at, you know, at age eight.
I'm still learning English. I listen to you.
I think we all are, as I'm evidencing right now. But I do want to make the point that if we want to lead, we should look to do less what is done through, you know, as a standard norm, which is offering foreign language as electives or even as a requirement to some extent at middle school and high school, and instead make a push to offer them at the lower elementary, at the lower levels, elementary schools, and then offer, maybe it's we offer Spanish at the elementary school, and then the Latin, the French, and the Mandarin later on, once they've already mastered one language. Because again, once you master one language, it's easy to master another. So those are just some points that I think, certainly tied into budget long-term, both with the class size... I think, certainly tied into budget long term, both with the class sizes and with the foreign language. If we want to stay out ahead of other districts, we also need to stay out ahead of our own budget. And we can't just look year to year. And I know internally, we look, we look at what's coming forward in the coming years. But as a community, there's a lot, usually the discussion is just focused on the current fiscal year. And I think the school committee, and to a larger extent, the other boards present here, can help initiate a conversation about long-term priorities and long-term spending rather than just the current fiscal year. So I'm done hogging the mic. Thank you.
Keith, you want to offer anything about long-term budgeting, what the town is doing? Or Chris?
Well, we do have-
Come up to the mic, because they won't hear on TV, please.
Yeah, sure. We do have a template for a five-year budget model.
Just to say again, that the budget documents that the administration has put together in concert with the finance committee does look at a five-year model so that we can be predicting now, when Bonnie Holston gives us her budget update, she reminds us that while we're closing, in closing the budget gap, and we're just about to do it this year, we're still looking at a 1.8 million gap, you know, for four or five years from now. So that there are some structural issues that we need to address. The spending plan looks not only at what our operating budgets are, what our debt service looks like, and increases in group health, of course, but also looks at what our capital needs are as well. There are a number of facility needs, new library, improvements to the fire station, there are other things in the, so there are a lot of pieces to try to pull together in that. And we do have a multi-year time horizon, which frankly means we have the time to figure out what the answers are because the solutions are not embedded in the multi-year planning. But the sooner that we identify those as problems, then the more time we have to address them.
Thank you.
Nothing that a lot of, nothing that that blank check wouldn't solve.
And you mentioned Bonnie Holston. And if folks don't know, Bonnie is Keith's assistant for finance. She does yeoman's work for our town. If you ever get the opportunity to see her, thank her. She's really working hard for us. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, it's Jenna Brownson. I'm at Harvard Road. I have four children who are schooled at the elementary, both elementary schools and one at the middle school. And I'm curious if you've ever had a conversation about later start dates for the older kids, and sending the younger kids to school at 5:30 when they're up and ready to go.
At least when they've woken you up.
Correct. So that's my question, if you've explored that at all.
Can you answer that, actually?
Great.
Four years ago?
I think so, yeah.
It's about four years ago, which doesn't mean we can't ask it again. But four years ago, we held public hearings on all that, as to the start date, to get to that level even, do we start in August, when do we take it to the vacations? We looked at all that. And then certainly, as you asked specifically, as far as start time in the day, we did do that. And here's how it pretty much ended up. The status quo, everybody was happy with it. Doesn't mean it was, is the right answer to that right now. It doesn't mean it's not something we shouldn't look at again. But certainly at that point, everyone, when I say everyone, everyone who did come, and we'd have about maybe 20, 25 people come to the public hearings on that, folks were sanguine. And I'll be candid with you, there was only really one question asked as far as educational efficiency, if you will, or educational achievement, based on all that. Vacation plans were a lot of concerns for folks. We're used to it. Whether we're an agrarian society anymore or not, we are a farming community, Littleton. But that came up. So we're used to it, in essence.
Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out, last week, we were briefed that the Bell Committee is going to be looking at things within the high school. And one of the things I asked specifically is, is should we be looking at start time, just as part of their study group?
There's another issue too, relative to high school, is that we, yeah, we can't really do it in a vacuum because athletes, everything is scheduled after school. And if you're traveling to go play at another venue or inviting people to come to our venue, it gets dicey. So-
Right, because Littleton would show up three hours late everywhere if we changed without consensus. All right, very good, thank you.
Fresh and ready to go, no doubt about it.
Parker manages to do it. There is, yet, some schools have done something hybrid. There is a lot of research, and there are districts that have done it, mostly in the last, I've done some research myself. There are, I could argue that there are physiological, physiological research that shows that high school students benefit educationally. They get to bed later, they're not getting their right hours, and if they start the day later, they do better on tests.
That's my understanding as well. Yep.
But there are a lot of, like, to Mike's point, we can't do it in a vacuum. And there are a lot of concessions that would have to come into play. But you're right, if we did it at the high school level, because of the transportation situation that we have, there's a lot of moving parts.
Sure.
It's definitely something that we kick around from time to time.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
And do you want anything on it? Excuse me. Do you want anything on the Bell? Do you want out any more?
No.
Just explain what the Bell policies are.
There is a Bell schedule study group that's been formed at the high schools, disciplinary, examining, oh, thank you, or examining different options for our Bell schedule. Under the existing, primarily focusing on the existing time constraints of the time of, our start time is contractually negotiated with the LEA, the Littleton Educators Association. And we're focused on really 7:30 to 2 o'clock right now. But we are going, you know, Darryl mentioned, as Darryl mentioned, we're going to look at the different options for what other configurations might we consider. Our main focus, though, is on our current time slot that we have, because we know we'll be quite limited. We don't want to go off on too many tangents if something really is a negotiated item. So, but we'll certainly consider all options.
One last comment on the Bell issue, at least my last comment on the Bell issue. Right now in Littleton, I was looking at the youth risk behavior survey that we did with Emerson Hospital. And in Littleton at the high school, 92%, 93% of Littleton High School students aren't getting enough sleep on the average school night, 92%. Now, sleep experts say that you need an average of eight and a half to nine and a quarter hours of sleep each night if you're high school aged. So the fact that 92% of our students aren't getting that is worrisome. It's not just us. That's almost exactly what it is nationwide. The schools that do better are the schools that start later. And there's been, as Chuck said, there's been a ton of research since about 1992, all the way up, you know, it's still coming out now, study after study after study, showing that even starting half an hour later from 7:30 to 8:00 works wonders. And to Mike's point, there are certainly after-school concerns. You really have to make sure that it works with the sports configuration. But you had said that Parker does it, and that other schools in the area can do it. It might take a couple of years to figure out how we need to do it in order to protect, you know, our school, our after-school programs, both sports and other extracurricular activities, and make sure that, you know, younger kids can get home on time and that sort of thing. But it is certainly something that I'm glad we're looking into, because the research on this is incredibly compelling. And if we want one tool to reduce the rates of depression, drug use, car accidents, absenteeism, tardiness, poor test scores, this is the one to do all of that. So just, it's a good thing to look into. So thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Yolanda Davis from Shaker Lane School. I think my question is primarily for Principal Branco. I have a son in the class of 2020, 148 students coming into your school, and there are rumors flying around town, around town that you don't have enough desks for them. So could you please explain what's happening?
Horrible rumor, by the way. Yeah, it's actually 145 kids total. 145, I just have facts in front of me, sorry. 145 kids. We met two and a half to three months ago as a leadership team at the middle school to talk about this bubble of children that's coming up. If you look at the classes coming up behind it, it's 128 at the fourth grade, and it's only 98 in the third grade. So we had lots of conversations driven by what's best needs for kids and the fiscal constraints we have building a budget every year. From a budgetary standpoint, I really struggled with saying, well, we're going to hire two teachers to deal with a population of children, move them through three years of the school with the children, which is an extremely difficult and possibly not possible hire, because you'd be looking at certifications and the ability to teach at three different grade levels across three straight years. And then in their third year, professional status, you'd be saying, thank you very much. But all of the numbers fall off the grid, and now I don't need those teachers anymore. So what we've decided to do is absorb that bubble for one group, and we're going to redeploy our teacher assistants. We're staying with level staffing, but we're doing our best creative work at the middle school to find a way within the level staffing constraints to deploy teacher assistant in every single classroom in the sixth grade. So we'll have a 15 to one ratio with students to adults in those classrooms. So it'll be a 29-student class size, but there'll be two adults in every one of those academic classrooms. And the faculty's had a lot of input on that. We've had multiple leadership conversations around that. And we think that that's a really sound way to take care of this population of students. And then as they move through, we'll also deploy the teacher assistants each year with those pocket of children and those teachers. So there'll basically in essence be two adults in the academic classrooms with those children as well. And you will get all of that, I'm sorry, you'll get all of that information from me in a transition letter and packet that traditionally I send out sometime around April, but it's premature to do it before the town's meeting. Certain things have to fall in line. So I would encourage people who don't know me well to just pick up and phone or come see me. I'm really easy to talk to. I would much rather people do that than chatting Facebook on this office here. But I'm confident that we have a good planning place to take care of this.
Just to add a little bit of information to what Dr. Branco has said, realistically, when you hit middle school, we have different certification requirements for teachers. We don't have generalist requirements anymore. So you'd really be looking at, if we were certification specific, looking at a .2 teacher for four core subjects. The chances of hiring a .2 teacher for three years would be very, very difficult in terms of keeping consistency in the same person. We may be fortunate to have somebody or find somebody with dual certification, but that's not that common yet in this day and age. As a vision plan for our middle school, we're working toward that long term, encouraging our staff to have dual certifications. But right now, the way the certification works is you're certified in one area. You can pick up additional certifications, but a lot of our staff are certified in one area. And they can, they can teach one course out of their area, but with the expectation that they will become certified.
Just to add one more point to that, and then we can move on. If the bubble wasn't just a bubble, and if we saw 145, 155 kids coming through the gateways, we would have a much drastically different conversation to be having at the school committee level and at the administrative team level. But because it's one group of children, and I realize they're your children, and that's the group you're concerned about, and I respectfully get that, we have to have a plan that's sound for these children. But I also have to think about what's coming up behind them. And we are not going to have this problem moving forward. So it's a, it's a true anomaly for us to have to deal with correctly, but it's timely. It has to be dealt with one time.
Does your town have enough desks?
Yeah, we have plans to put in a desk. Nowhere is with desks.
Thanks, Keith. Chuck. Anybody else? Yes, Lisa.
Lisa Boone one up. I'm just curious, I think you guys have done a great job this year, after the difficulty that, you know, you struggled with last year for the budget. You know, it was nice to see that things just went smoother for everybody. My question is, you've managed to keep fees and other things like that down, but the reality is, there's a good amount of fees for families who have children in school that are not part of our base, our, you know, budget base. And I was just wondering if there's ever been a list, essentially, of what the fees are. And then as well, there's an enormous amount, in my opinion, I could be wrong, of generous donations that we get every year from parents, from businesses, that aren't included in the base budget as well. And I think that, you know, many of those things are meant for extras. But I think the tighter the budget gets, we rely on a lot of those donations and, you know, things from families and businesses that aren't really accounted for. And it would be interesting just to see an approximation of what that number is. And the reason why I think it would be interesting to have that is because when people come up and say, this budget's ridiculous, you know, there are some people who don't understand why it costs so much to run the schools. It doesn't matter how well laid out it is. But I think it would be nice to have the other side of it as well and say, here's the rest of it that's not even covered by our budget, just so that people are aware that we have a wonderful system. We have a lot of opportunity that may not even be offered elsewhere. And a lot of it is, isn't really even covered in the base, you know, it really isn't. So I think it just would be important for our community to understand that, that that is a piece of what we have and what we use to, you know, offer what we can offer.
We actually had that exact discussion the other day in Budget Subcommittee, and we don't feel that that's appropriate for tonight, because we were talking specifically about an appropriated budget to go to town meeting floor with. But we did have a discussion about what would be the right time and what's the right mechanism and delivery method for that kind of information. Because, I mean, there are things, like, we don't talk about the food service budget in this because that is a self-contained, you know, well, with the fees that we charge, it's basically a self-contained, so we don't talk about it in this context. But we pay for food. I mean, we buy food every day, and we prepare it, and we sell it, and it's bought, you know. And, you know, we have transportation in here, but some of that is offset. And, you know, we have coaches' salaries in here, but there are other aspects of implementing, you know, extracurricular activities that are covered by the fees you talked about. And there's fundraising that goes on. There are groups, you know, out there that fundraise specifically for those efforts, and there are groups that donate specifically for those efforts. So we've talked about it, and we will talk about it some more. And at some point, we probably would have a, you know, a type of presentation to show what else do we do beyond the appropriated budget. It's a worthwhile discussion.
Yeah, I do think it is important. You know, you see, we had wonderful, you know, basketball team this year. Their uniforms, they were fundraised for, you know, those things. I think it's important for our community to understand that, you know, all of those things. We have all these great musicals that go on. There's so much time and money that goes into it that's not, you know, that is available to our community that really isn't. And I understand that, you know, it is an extra, I just think that people need to be a little bit more aware of that, because I do think it's important for us as a community to recognize that our schools are even more than what we're paying for on our tax base.
Thanks, Lisa. That's it. I'm getting ready to close this, if you all, I think you're all in agreement with ready to close. Right, so you want to make a motion then?
I will make a motion that we vote to approve a $16,947,000 budget for fiscal year 2014.
Second. Okay, motion made, second it. Any further discussion on it? Polls a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. That means that's what recommended to the Board of Selectmen and Pintom, which, as you hear through the discussion tonight, we are already in agreement with that. And that's what we'll be presenting at town meeting. And that's where you all get to vote on it. You're the ones that actually decide that's what we're going to spend this year on the schools in Littleton. We're making an offer, you get to accept it or reject it. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm going to close the public hearing also. I'll take a motion on that.
We'll still close the public hearing.
Just a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made, second to close the public hearing on the FY14 budget. Polls a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes. Well, thanks for coming. Hey, come every week, please, or every meeting.
Not every week.
On weekends, we have meetings, there you go. And thanks for showing the interest, though, and coming on out and asking the questions and making the comments. Do appreciate all that. Okidou. Chuck, can you tell us anything on the track?
That was some frustration trying to get the track handed over to the town. Having some frustration with Gail. And by hook and by crook, we will have accepted the track at some level in order for the first track meet to take place on April 3rd at 3:30 PM on our home track, first home track meet in over five years. So that meet is April 3rd, Wednesday, April 3rd. And by hook and by crook, we'll make it happen if we have to drive down to Normal and make it happen.
All right, thanks. Anybody have any questions, Chuck, on that? John, anything to add from the high school perspective?
I was just excited about the, you know, the view of the traction on the track.
Okidou. For general business, anybody have anything else this evening? We're going to have to have an executive- We're going to have to have an executive session shortly, I promise. All right, Darrell, you want to give us a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn it to-
No, we already did.
I'll read the notes for a moment.
I was eating some Korean cookies, Chuck.
Make a motion to adjourn it to executive session for purposes of discussing contract negotiations with no intent to return to open session.
Second.
Motion made, and seconded. Roll call, Bob. Aye.
Aye.
Darrell?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate it, folks. Have a great evening.
Please do.
I know, I'm like-
Budget, and we're out.